Good evening and welcome to the Acton Main Selectmen's Meeting of February 24th, 2021. I think it's just a little after six. Let's salute the flag first.
To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberate and just as a ball.
All right, Jen, Town Administrator Weekly Update. I want to be all ready.
All right, just a few things for this week because we've been busy with some other items that you'll see soon. First one is just FYI that we're going to be doing staff training that will include the transfer station, and they don't know this yet, but with the AED training and fire extinguishers, it's something that the municipal is requiring that we do more frequently. So we've scheduled that for March 11th, which is a Thursday at 2:00. So we'll invite the guys over, and it'll be for all of the staff. And based on the recommendation from the insurance company, it's going to be mandatory. You okay with that?
Well, if it's mandatory.
Well, I mean, no, I'm just telling you, the --
I'm sorry.
The insurance company is saying it's a regulation that we should follow, you know, that we should follow.
Right, yeah.
The staff needs training, but the memo that's going to come from the board is going to say it's mandatory that they be there.
Yeah, well, it should be, yeah, mandatory, yeah, yes.
I know, but --
Sorry, I understand what you're saying now.
-- there's memos and, you know, I'm clearing it with you.
Definitely.
I mean, insurance says, so, yeah.
And we've done it on a Thursday, so pretty much all the town hall staff will already be here.
Okay.
We obviously can't do it when the transfer station's open, and I'm sure the guys will be fine. I'm not worried about them.
Okay, yep.
Next is just a census thank you. You received a nice little brochure from the United States Census, just thanking the town hall and the staff and everybody that helped out gathering all their numbers, so we'll display that. The planning board meeting for tomorrow night has officially been canceled. I had a Zoom meeting this morning or this afternoon with iWorks. That's the company that, the software that you guys agreed to for the CEO. We're working on training and setting it up and getting it installed. There's a long list of things that they want from the town that we're working on gathering for them, but they're working directly with the CEO to get the fields that he wants, you know, the dropdowns and custom the software to him, but, you know, it's things like the, you know, the fees that we use, that, just a lot of odds and ends documents that we're starting to work on gathering. We'll offer support if the land use needs any help putting them together. Today was just more of an administration side, that's why I attended it. Just an update that tomorrow, Thursday, you've got two things scheduled. You've got 4:30 with the treasurer. This is a follow-up. Last week, we had our kind of first look at the budget numbers, you know, kind of for the public. I mean, I think that we were up 50, 60 cents if we submitted everything as it was. I think it came out to 67 cents increase if we submitted the budget as is. So certainly, you guys got to start looking at some cuts and discussions, and then after that, we got Canal Bridge into the discussion, so that, up that number a little bit more. So we're going to go with some revised numbers tomorrow and see what you guys think of them before the upcoming meeting with the department heads. And then at 6:00, you have a webinar, you have a Zoom meeting with HEB, and I have talked to Chris Fornier, and he's prepared to go through the present, go through a full presentation and explain to you the different options. We'll send a reminder out. Cheryl, remind me to the road committee and make sure the guys can be there if possible. And Robin, just because I happened to look over at you, you're welcome to Zoom with us here at the town hall if you want.
Okay.
Okay. So that's tomorrow night. Next item I wanted to tell you about, just for anybody that was interested in the vaccine that Town of Waterville offered us, looks like it's fallen through. I did send an email to the, I blind CC'd everybody that was interested so that we wouldn't know because it's kind of personal. They were told they were going to get a certain amount of vaccines for municipal workers, frontline workers outside of fire and rescue, you know, animal control, selectmen, clerks, people that work with the public. Apparently, that's fallen through, so they're recommending that reach out to family physicians for now, unless something turns around, I'll keep you updated. All right, just an FYI, more for the public, that next Monday, our code enforcement officer does start regular full-time hours, so our land use department will go back to open hours, same as the town hall, starting next week. And then the last thing was more of a discussion. I know we've talked about the capital improvement committee. There was discussion a couple of weeks ago about somebody possibly being interested. We were waiting to see if that person wanted to come forward. Now, there might possibly be another person. I need you to decide how many, how many people you want on the committee, and if we're not advertising it anymore, you know, what you want to do with it. So hoping we could end on that discussion.
All righty. Done?
That's it.
Do we got five on there right now?
We have five, yeah. And I have two more that are interested, so, I mean.
Doesn't make any difference to me either way, you know, seven works, five works.
Stick with what we got, get the committee rolling and see how it goes from there.
I, you know, I mean, I don't, either way, I mean, I don't mind having more. It's not a problem. So I guess it's up to you. You know, I mean, I don't, it's not like we have to have.
I mean, chances are, we're going to have somebody drop out.
Right.
You know.
That's, that's what I figured, you know.
Yeah, yeah, let's leave it at five for now and then go from there.
All right, so, five, we're not currently looking for anybody else in that committee.
Yeah, just keep the other two names in the hat and, you know.
Well, neither one of them have contacted me, so I have their names. So, I mean, past practice has been they have to reach out to the administrator. I would imagine if they come to a selectman, a selectman tells them that. So if I get names, I will hold on to them, but for now, I don't personally have any. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
All righty. I know we signed the warrants and the bills, all of us. So I guess we need to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion, we approve the agenda.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor? All opposed? All right.
I'll make a motion, we approve the minutes of February 17th.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? All righty. All right, moving on, department head committee chair updates. First one would be Rec Committee request.
So I'm actually going to speak on both of their behalf. They've asked me to. The first one, the Rec Committee would like to consider having baseball. Shapley is going to be doing baseball. Some of the surrounding towns are. They feel like they can start, they'd like to start having the conversation of what that might look like with safety measures in place, so they're really looking for a blessing or an opinion from the board.
I think if, I think in the other towns of Dora, in Dora COVID safe, I'd like to see --
I would like to see sports started up, yeah.
Yep.
All right, so assuming that we can incorporate the COVID mandates as put forward, we'll, I'm sure we can look at that.
Great.
The second one is Goat Hill. Carl Davis contacted me in regards to having Maplestone remove a couple of pine trees that were hit, were struck by lightning. These are fairly good-sized pine trees. Double-checked with the treasurer, reviewed the insurance, as long as Maplestone can provide us with a million-dollar liability coverage, they're not being compensated for it. The town on our end doesn't have any concern, so.
Where are the trees?
On Goat Hill.
Okay.
I'm not specific. So Carl did say that he would take all, all safety precautions, and they would close the trail off, and that they would, you know, they'll do everything they need to do and plan it in advance, they're not just going to go up and do it, so.
They have a forestry class with the kids where they train them and stuff, so.
So they'll make sure nobody's on the trail, nobody's hiking, no one's anywhere around, and, like I said, they'll have the liability insurance, so.
Yep.
You guys okay with that?
Yes. All right, moving on to --
Well, I think that Will wanted to.
He snuck right in there on me.
I'm Will in District 1. On Monday, I had a Zoom meeting with New York County Solar Water. I don't know if you guys remember, like, Montesova. So we're going to be moving ahead on a project on Willow Street for the springtime. They've got a bunch of matching grants that they've got accepted for, and I, like a scope of work together for them, you know, like I usually do with you guys when I do a project, and we had an interview, and they're all for it, so we can have a sidewalk once snow goes, and they're going to send me over some stuff that you guys just assigned, like, you know, they're going to match the grant with us, and they know this stuff, and we're just going to ask them more, what, you know, what do you do, like, 60, 40 match? We got on Zoom, she kept breaking out, so I couldn't hear what she was saying, but in the next few weeks, I'll be coming to something with you guys, so just sign it, make sure you're all set with it. And the third thing, and the second thing is, we've been, you know, been pretty busy planning snow. We're going through all assault we put in this, this fall, I mean, sand we put in this fall, and we're right into some old stuff, I think it's about three years old right now, so we're streaming away at the old enough right now. And then the third thing is, I've been talking to some, some surrounding towns and other public works, and we probably look at it first, the next week, we're going to post the roads, so. So that's all I have, thank you.
Kind of just a couple of quick things, Will. If you get the documents from YCC in advance before the meeting, if you can send them to me, that way we can, if we need to get anybody to review them prior to, we can get them assigned. And posted roads, I trust you guys will do them together, so that, because we get all of the calls about the posted --
I have like six today, so.
So when you, when you officially post them and when you officially unpost them, if one of you can call me, I would appreciate it.
Like you did last year, so.
Thank you.
What are you posting today, too? Problem mayors that we did last year. We pulled on April 3rd, I mean, 4th last year, but, you know, I'll see how everything dries out, so, but mayors, so.
Yep. Thanks, Will. All right, full business, Canal Bridge.
Canal Bridge, is it okay if I ask Adam to come up?
Sure.
Part of the conversation?
Yep.
So we had our Zoom meeting last week with Canal Bridge, and I think the way that we left it was that they were going to tie down some numbers, and I know that Adam and David went and took a look at some things. They've come up with a couple of more proposals and some other ideas that they wanted to kind of run by you guys to see what you thought. First of all, you have in front of you, and I know you haven't seen it yet, but this is a contract really addressed to Wakefield, but it's a, it's for $165,000, and it spells out the scope of the work. It's basically the installation of the bridge. So our half would be half of that, and then they have calculated $30,000 for the tarring and all of the excavation work per town. He is sending me something in writing that he says they can do the entire Canal Bridge project for $112,500, which is down in the 100. I know, I made him call, I shouldn't say made, I asked him to double-check with his public works because I felt --
I asked the same thing.
I felt, I --
Did you show all those numbers to the board?
Yeah, talked to Brock, because when we, well, and granted, this all just kind of happened last Thursday, but we were planning on $180,000. But this 165, so if we take half of that, that puts us at, what, 82.5, 84.5, something like that?
Then another 30, so.
And 30,000 each, so he's, they're estimating $60,000 for all of the excavation work and the tar work that has to be done after the fat.
This doesn't include the --
This includes everything, absolutely everything.
Construction work to tie in our roads.
Okay.
It's going to tie in Robinson, too?
That's what he said.
What he said.
My Dr. Brock is born.
I'd like to see, I'd like to see if he hears.
Well, this is just the bridge.
So that's part of the, that's part of the, and you can have this one if you'd like, that's part of the 30,000, and you'll have, I'll have something for you for tomorrow night.
Okay, so that's additional?
Yeah, yeah, so this is, so this 165, so our half is the 82.5, so you take 82.5 and then you add the 30,000, and that's, so they're budgeting, they're, they're saying that Brock says his guys can do it for 60 grand. I did ask Michelle to make that 112 or 125, just to give, you know, a 10%, you know what I mean?
Yeah, just to give it back.
Brock, you're talking about Brock's down Rochester, Brock?
No, Brock is the, Brock is the head public director. That's his name.
Public Works. Top of Wakefield.
Yeah.
Okay, so they're going to do the work?
Yeah, yes.
They're, the, the bridge company's going to do the work.
They're going to do all the work themselves, okay?
Yep, we're going to help support if needed, but it's --
Nice.
They're going to be doing all the excavation work, the bridge.
So what do we have, what is the number right now for the project?
112,500.
112,500.
Our half.
Our half.
That is our half.
Our half.
And that includes the 30,000?
That includes the 30,000, so it's 82,500, which is half the contract that you have in front of you.
Right.
Then it's an additional 30,000. Brock is the public works director in Wakefield. So he's the guy, I've been speaking to the town administrator in Wakefield, and when he called me this afternoon, you know, he said 30,000 per town, I told him I thought it was low and it wasn't what we had originally talked about. He hung the phone up, called the public works director, and called me back five minutes later and said Brock has double-checked and verified and verified 30,000 each, they can get the job done. So I asked Michelle, in the paperwork that she's presenting to you, that we're going to present tomorrow night, we put 180 in last week when we, when we spoke.
Right.
I changed that to 125, which is going to change our budget, and we can go over that tomorrow. That helps, but he says that's absolutely everything. We put a 10% buffer on our side just in case, and they don't need to know that, but he says it's everything.
Yeah.
I just want to clarify, I want to throw, because this is going to be big for agents.
And so what, what Dino said to me tonight was that he was recapping all this in a proposal to the Town of Acton, and they have a council meeting tonight. He was going to ask their board to sign off on that, and he would send it to me tomorrow.
Okay.
So I will double-check, we'll verify that it's Robinson Road, and let you know, but that's what he said.
Good, yeah, because that's going to be brought up, right?
Yeah.
So how does the board feel about them doing all of the excavation work?
I think it's probably a good idea, you know.
Okay with it, Adam?
You know.
I'm okay with it, man, as long as it's in the budget, the numbers are great.
Well, they know that the board can't sign anything, I mean, they know that --
Can't do anything till after June anyway.
Right, we have to ask for this, yeah.
The question I got is, on Robinson Road, I mean, we've got our, we've got our, our right-of-way to a certain point, but are they going to have to extend beyond our, our right-of-way to make that work? It's something you have, you're going to have to contact the people.
How far is our right-of-way into that?
Well, I mean, I don't, I don't, I think that, there might be a 50-foot right-of-way.
Yeah, I'm saying, I bet it's no more than that.
I always treat it as a 32, because it was so narrow through there, there's no rock walls, or anything else up there, rock wall, rock wall. So, but if you, we may have to do a little bit of research, make sure that we don't extend into beyond our right-of-way.
So we need to know what the right-of-way is on the Robinson Road.
I believe there's a road association up there, there's a negative.
There must be, yeah.
Well, I know we, we gave money towards one of the roads in there that had a road association, what was that? What was his?
I think it was Robinson.
I don't know.
Yeah, it's off Robinson Road.
It was Robinson and Robertson.
Well, there's another road in there, but I know there's a road association there. I don't know if there's one for Robinson itself, but we may want to make sure that the grade's going to work, and we don't have to worry about getting some sort of permission from that. Now, the state owns part of that left-hand side, because it's bolt-on.
Right.
We may want to make sure we take care of that, you know, do a little research, make sure the grade's going to work.
Yeah.
One day. Well, I'm, I'm good with it, I think this is great.
I do, too.
Yeah, yeah, I'm tickled.
So there's only eight properties on Robinson Road, is that all right?
Mr. Farmer.
Oh, yes.
He's off Robinson, I believe.
Yeah, but it's, he's on Wilkins.
Wilkins, but that's off Robinson.
Right. So you're thinking the road association might go all the way through there?
Wilkins Road's on Daniele Road.
Huh?
Wilkins Road's off Daniele Road.
Isn't Wilkins Road where Mr. Farmer is?
No, I don't know, I don't know what the name of the road, Mr. Farmer, he's off Robinson Road, I don't know where he's.
A farmer, Mr. Farmer's on Wilkins Road.
Is he?
Yeah, I've got maps online.
I guess I'm wrong.
I don't know where the road is, so I can't, I'll be.
With Wilkins?
It's off the Daniele Road, the Daniele.
Oh, that, that part of the grade, you say?
Okay.
Okay.
So Robinson Road, and I --
Robinson Road goes up to --
Yeah, kind of.
Where the V is, that goes into New Hampshire, and Robinson Road keeps going to the right all the way out through there.
Yeah, to the right to Main, to the left of New Haven.
So we still think, are there still State of Maine?
We just got to make sure that we're able to go beyond, if we need to, to go beyond our right-of-way.
Right, that's my idea.
And so I think we just got to make sure.
I'm not seeing the state own it, the state doesn't own any property on Robinson.
I don't know if they do it on it.
Well, I'm looking at the eight owners.
I think they have interest in it because they got the bolt launch.
I was going to say, the bolt launch is there, so maybe.
We'll do some digging and see what we can come up with. I may reach out to Lankowski's Land Use just to make sure that we're covering that.
We just got to make sure that we can make the grade work. We can't just go like this.
No.
You know, we're going to have to blend it, and we hope we don't have to.
Pretty decent amount, too.
You know, if you had a 50-foot right-of-way, you're only talking 25 feet to that road at the edge of it. It's not very far to make that grade, because it's going to be quite a, what do you, what do you think the grade, I mean, are we making a three-foot, two-and-a-half, three-foot elevation change?
At least a three-foot elevation change.
Yeah, so, you know, to get a, you know, 2% or a 3% grade, you're going to have to go up right away to make that work.
Yeah.
So we want to find out, A, if this 30,000 excavation work includes making sure that Robinson Road stays up to grade, and B, if there's anybody, what our right-of-way is on Robinson Road into December that we need to notify with this project aboutting it?
Yeah, because I mean, if, if there's a road association, which I'm not sure.
I don't feel like there is, but I could be wrong.
I don't think so. I think the state owns right to where it goes into the bolt launch.
Well, if that's the case, then we have to get a hold of Hillland Fisheries.
Right, have to get a hold of, like, the state, but I'm pretty sure the state owns from Canal Road up to where they go into launch the boats.
So we have to get a hold of Hillland Fisheries on that.
Right.
I mean, we'll get Lankowski to help us on that.
Okay.
All right, so I'll be in touch with that piece, but, so, and we'll talk budget numbers tomorrow, but we're, we've gone from the 180 to 125, so.
That's good.
55,000. But I, I have to feel like Robinson Road is probably not included to that extent, but I wouldn't think so either. So that number might rise a little, but it's good to know we've got some wiggle room based on what we've thought.
All righty, new business, A, town meeting zoning amendments?
All right, so what you have in front of you are the four proposed amendments from the planning board. So I want you to just kind of set them aside, look at them, and look, you're just looking at the nice charts and the length of the documents, and the reason that I, I say this to you is, there's no way I can put this on a ballot. There's just no way. I can't, you know, I mean, you can't put these charts on a ballot like this. So, and that's why I have town meeting in there as well. So we really have to have a serious conversation about what we think we're going to do, what we're willing to try to do. You know, it's June, do we want to think about, right now, we can have 100 people outside if we have them six feet apart. Do we want to think about trying to use the fairgrounds and having an open town meeting there, assuming that, you know, they'll let us, based on the last letter we sent them in '19 about the fire and rescue trucks at the fair? Remember that? The, you know, do we want to think about having a town meeting outside, you know, you're going to be looking at, you know, possible tents, depends, well, depends on where we, you know, tents.
I was just going to say, what about weather? I mean.
Can you take your chances? It's the second Saturday of June, either that or.
Always good to have talent.
Because it's inside.
Yeah. It's always like an 90-out, I know, it's hot, yeah.
Always really nice out.
Well, that's what I'm thinking, if it's outside, then it's going to rain that day, right? It's going to be downpouring.
The other piece that I, I can look into legal with is, which is, it's never recommended, unless the planning board as a whole, and I would really want to speak to them as a whole, says we absolutely need to do this, the other piece that is, I believe, a possibility, please don't quote me on this, is that you could put a question on a ballot that says, "Do you approve the proposed zoning ordinances as submitted to the town clerk on such and such day?" It is generally not recommended because in 20, 30, 40 years, that document is never part of a warrant, you know what I mean? We've tried to, we always put, we copy and paste these ordinances in full in those warrants for a reason, so they're in your, they're in your town meeting record books, they're in your, you know, in your results. Some towns do choose to shorten things to do something like that, but, you know, that document can change over the years. They disappear, they, it's just not something we recommend unless it's something that absolutely needs to be voted on now. You know, last year, we said to the planning board, and I think to a lot of the voters, that we had hoped to have one in the fall. That didn't happen. I feel like this year, we're in a much different situation, though. I mean, we've got the vaccines going on, you know, they're certainly starting to lighten things.
Where would we?
The other, the other thing we could do, sorry to interrupt you, is that we could think about the school. You know, you've got 50 people in, in that room, and this is, and I have not had a conversation with John Ross, so I don't know if this would even go with him, but there is an overflow system that we could use, you know, over 50 voters, they'd have to be in certain rooms, there'd have to be certain things set up, they have to be able to see, visually see the moderator, the clerk, the person speaking, and there's certain rules that have to be put in place. It's a huge undertaking to have these overflow rooms and to make sure that, you know, Dennis' rights in, in the art room are the same as Adam's rights in the music room, you know, they can all hear, you know.
Right.
It's a big process, so, kind of like the outdoor side better than the overflow rooms.
So those people would have to be able to speak, so that would, you know.
Right, they'd have to.
They'd have to be able, they'd have to see the moderator. The moderator would have one person as the contact in each room, so the moderator would have to be able to see, you know, me if I'm in the art room. He reads it, reads it, you know, Dennis wants to make a motion, or Dennis wants to speak. It's, it's a revolving process, you know, between all the rooms.
Outside would definitely be easier.
Outside would be easier, and this is all if we wanted, if you insist on putting, I don't mean you, but if we insist on putting these on right now, that's an option. Your option is also to do what we talked about, just approve the document as on file at the clerk, which I personally don't recommend.
I'm sure other towns do that all the time.
Which part?
Vote on a document that isn't right.
They do, but Acton has, had some history of documents and housekeeping, and it's just cleaner to do it the other way.
What about the fairgrounds?
The fairgrounds, I mean, we can start having conversations with them.
You've got the bleachers, which is covered, you've got the.
Yeah, that's covered, right.
You've got the, the lower, the pulling area that's covered. You've got the, the lower, the pulling area that's covered.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not gonna help you in a drive in rain, but, and then you have the, the stage.
Right.
You know.
Yep, no, there's certainly.
I really think that we oughta look into some, something like that. I, I don't, I don't feel comfortable putting zone and stuff, especially on the way we're talking.
Yeah.
The whole idea, this, this affects people.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And they should be able to, yeah.
And.
One page gets swapped out.
If they don't come to town meeting and fight against us, they're a problem.
Right.
Right, but they should be able to.
Say, "This is why I don't want this."
Well, no, and that's why, that's why we're saying either, if we can't put it, if we want to have.
We either don't put it on.
We either don't put it on.
Wait for a regular town meeting, or we, or we do outside.
Right, right, and that's, right.
How hard is outside, do you think? I mean, what?
Well, I mean, you know, it's, it's February, we might be able to, we might be able to pull it together by June. And if it's, I mean, we're gonna check with the fair first to make sure that the date's available. Um, you know, I would have to reach out, we'll reach out to the school and hopefully with Mike Corey to see what we can do in regards to a sound system. Um, you know, I need to make sure that the handicap accessible, you know, we've gotta have a check-in area. I mean, there's, there's a process to it, but I, you know, I feel like we could certainly pull it off.
You've got a sound system there now, don't they?
They, the fair has one, but generally, they don't let them, they're not used, you know. And then the other piece is, you know, if we're thinking, okay, we might be able to have a town meeting, what are we gonna do with the school? Do we want to, because if we put the school and the town together, that's gonna double your numbers. I mean, let's face it, school parents and staff, they come out to support the, the town, the school budget. They don't always come out to the town budget. Um, you know, but they're, they're looking at April, you know, which I don't think you're gonna be able to have an open town meeting.
No.
No, not, not outside, and not inside.
Right, because I don't know that we have the technology to do the overflow and.
No, no, I'd stay away from that idea. I've got a sound system that would work at the fairgrounds. I've got speakers in PA and.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I feel like the town must still does as well, you know.
Think there's enough area to do both of those in June?
Yeah, I mean, you know, I'd have to, I'd have to go down there and.
It'd be a long day, but.
About the square footage and six feet apart from separate families, figure out how many people I can put in those bleachers.
I would think as big as that is, you know, for some chairs.
Well, you could.
That's what I was just thinking, the, yeah.
Yeah, use that as your.
Stand and stuff. I would think if, if you can't get a.
I would think you could put a couple of hundred there safely.
Yeah, a hundred.
Yeah.
At least.
We know a hundred people a town, I mean, that's record breaking.
Oh, yeah.
But if it's a school and us.
Well, and I think that.
It'd be awesome and all that, but.
Yeah.
I'd have to look at the, I'd have to look at the, we obviously have counts in CBR of exactly how many people attended, but um.
I think that's really, I.
You know, but, but the flip side of it, the flip side of it is that, you know, and I'm just gonna say this for the sake of conversation, is that, um, try to give you an actual, actual number. Last year.
We had a lot more.
You know, exactly, you had, um, 564 ballots cast by the super ballot. So, you know, a handful of people may not like changing it from open town meeting, but you had 564 people. You'd never get that at an annual town meeting.
No.
Well, we didn't have any zone and stuff all day.
That's true.
That's.
Yeah, and I wouldn't recommend, if you go by ballot, I would recommend that you table it again, which I hate to do. I don't, I haven't looked through this, so, and I haven't heard from the planning board, I haven't met with the CEO, so I don't know what the importance or, you know, where the stands as far as their priority level, so I'm not gonna comment on that. But, yeah, you can't do these on a ballot, there's just, so you've got a week or two maybe. Um, I'll make some calls, um, and see if there's something we think we can pull off. I mean, the biggest thing is find out that the, you know, the grounds are available. Um, I know that the Renaissance and a couple of other places are.
Are they gonna do?
Book it, so that's number one. And what is the, the executive order says 100 people outside or every, per square footage? Can we go over 100 outside?
I don't know.
So I'll have to look into that as well, so. Something to think about, process some of those different things in your mind. Um, I will speak to the planning board chair and the CEO as well, and we'll certainly do everything we can to get him on there.
All right, moving along, uh, CEO appointment.
So, um, I created the appointment to go along with all of the other appointments, so it's good until the 30th, uh, to get him on the same fiscal year as the other appointments that you have. Hopefully, that's okay, or I can, we can go change it, but that's, is just what I did.
Okay. So, it's a typical appointment, Title 30A, MRSA 2602. Selectman's Office, Municipality of Acton, two, Michael Gilpatrick. The selectman of the municipality of Acton, doing accordance with the provisions and laws of the state of Maine, hereby appoint you as code enforcement officer within and for the municipality of Acton until 6/30/2021, given under hand this 24th day of February 2021. I will make a motion that we appoint Michael Gilpatrick as our code enforcement officer.
I'll second that.
That's been moved and seconded. Yeah, all in favor, sorry. All opposed, all right. All right, we got C, FOIA request.
Okay, so we have two that we're gonna deal with, uh, tonight. Um, one is dated the 19th and one is dated the 21st, so, um, it is the first time that the board has met since then. And in both cases, um, I need some input from you. Um, so let's go with the 21st first, it's closer. So, "I'm formally requesting accommodations to be made for public attendance to public meetings for people who cannot wear face masks due to a milk, medical condition. I have an FOIA request that is to be brought to the selectman's attention during the next selectman's meeting. I should be allowed to defend my request and be able to answer the questions that may arise." So, I spoke to the attorney today, and he says that in the December 11th executive order on inside meetings, that there is absolutely nothing that exempts or gives you any authority to allow somebody to come in without a mask or a shield. So you just don't have that authority. Second thing that we talked about is, okay, well, what can we do then? If, if he can't come in without a mask, and he can't wear a shield, you saw the emails, that that's no longer an option for him, um, we have to have some sort of dialogue about what we can do. So, one of the conversations, one of the things that we talked about is, is possibly, and it's not ideal, but if you do, possibly if we know that he wants to be on the agenda or wants to speak, and doesn't wanna email his questions in advance because he wants to be able to participate, I'm trying to picture how setting up a Zoom meeting live at the same time might possibly work. So, if, the problem with the, with the Zoom meeting is that it's gotta be far enough away from you guys so that, that he can see, that the person can see all three of you. I can't put three laptops in front of you because of the echo. So if I'm lucky enough to get it back, you know, to the door area so that he can see you guys and you can see him, um, I'm not sure that when he communicates, if it's gonna be close enough that you're gonna be able to see and hear him. Possibly, you know, we can, with APATs help, put a microphone closer. Um, you know, something we have to try and maybe work out, uh, that's one option that the attorney and I talked about. The other one is possibly allowing him to call in. If we know he has an agenda item and, um, one of you wanna give up your cell phone numbers and allow him to call in, we could maybe, you know, do a, reference it that way, um, another option. Thoughts?
I like the Zoom idea better.
Okay.
Than the phone, I don't know.
And, and, and we would have.
I'm just.
Is this the same individual that stood here for two hours one night with a, with a face shield on?
Yes, but you, but you have since gotten.
But we still have.
But you've since got an email, and I, and I don't wanna, you know, I mean, you've since got an email indicating why he believes he can no longer wear that.
Yeah.
And I forwarded you that, and I really don't wanna discuss that email here, I don't feel like it's appropriate.
Yeah.
Um, but he, he's now claiming.
I just feel like the phone would be harder.
I, I think it might be easier, but.
You think so?
I think the phone might be easier too.
Well, the only, my concern with the Zoom is so that if I have that set up there and that's there, we're gonna have to have another one here because we've gotta be able to manage.
How are we all gonna hear it, and how is he gonna be able to see us?
You're gonna manage the Zoom account.
Well, we gotta be able to ma, and he.
That's kinda how Lebanon was doing. Lebanon, did you see that thing on TV where that guy there in Washington DC, well, he was talking to them, to the whole board?
Right.
On phone, that's how they were doing it, through the phone.
Okay.
I mean, we could get, you know, Mr. Corey or Mr. Cranston to.
I mean, if the phone is easier, I have no problem with that. I was just kinda thinking, how are we gonna hear all three of us?
Well, we're just gonna, you know, it's gonna be put on speaker, and we're gonna put the microphone down, and, you know, we can.
So he doesn't need to see us?
Well, he doesn't need to be able to see, I mean, it doesn't say that, he just wants to be able to participate.
That's why I was wondering about the Zoom thing, I mean, what's, you know.
I mean, and maybe, you know, I can, I, we can share all my, play with both of them. I mean, I have to see how the audio is gonna pick it up, I just don't know.
Well, whatever, whatever works.
Um.
I mean, I guess, I'll go for the phone first and see if that works.
I like the phone idea first, yeah.
Let's try that first, and if it's.
I mean, basically, he's gonna ask a question, we're gonna give an answer, he'll give a rebuttal and.
And then that's.
You know, I mean, that's typically how.
Right.
How it goes, so, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
We're all in agreement, go for the phone?
Yeah.
Whose phone number's given? Not mine.
What do you mean?
I'm sorry?
Not mine. Actually, we have a phone jack out here.
I was just gonna say, do we have?
No, be, um.
What's this over here?
Yeah, we may have that one.
We try a phone jack and just have a phone sitting there.
Yep.
On speaker.
Right, then we don't have to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
For any of us, yeah, that would, you know, use the town's phone.
Let us know, Michelle. Okay, we'll figure it out, and we'll reach out to him, okay?
All right.
So that's the first one, um.
Oh, we got another one, okay, I was, I was moving along.
Thank you. All right, so the second one is emails dated 2/19. In the minutes from the selectman's meeting on January 20th, 2021, it was proclaimed that the roads in Article 41 from the town warrant in 2010 were dedicated, voted, and approved by the residents of Acton as town roads. Under the rules of Maine Freedom of Access Act, I am seeking proof of said dedication, vote, and approval of the roads as townways from the town warrant listed above. As I told you when I spoke to you on that day, I have documentation of everything that I spoke about. You proclaim to have the same proof, I would like a copy of such proof. So, just for clarity, these are the minutes that reference that section. Uh, Mr. Donahue questioned why some roads in Acton, which appeared in Article 41 of the 2000 and Town, Town Warrant, which asked for approval to accept them and failed by the vote of the people, were still maintained. Selectman Winchell replied that it was a frivolous article that some selectmen at the time tried to move forward and was never necessary. He believed the town roads in that article had previously been accepted, and even if they failed on town floor that day, it didn't overturn the original acceptance of the said road. Mr. Winchell indicated this was done because a few private roads were snuck into the list, so.
I wanna clarify my statements there.
Huh?
I wanna clarify my statements, because what he had stated there was, and I said that, these roads were voted on. Whether they were or they weren't, okay? The problem is, in state of Maine, if you were taking care of a road for so long, that you have to continue taking care of that road until you vote it down. None of those roads were ever voted down except for.
So that's why they were continued to.
Even if you go back and can't find it, because we've been taking care of those roads for 50 years, that means we still have to.
Right.
Until we turn them down. So, I don't know what he's gonna find, but even if you can't find it, you still have to take care of them.
Which brings us to the next piece, if you can't find it. So he's asking for proof that all of those articles, and there's, and there's three pages worth of roads in that warrant article. Um, so, under Freedom of Information Statute 408A, um, I mean, I, I need some instruction from the board on this. You've got two options as Attorney Mayor sees it. One is to estimate the amount of time that you think it would take, and we think that starting at 25 hours is reasonable, times the $15 an hour, the first hour is free, taking that amount, the statute very clearly says that payment in advance, the agency or official having custody or control of public record has the right to request payment in advance if it's over $100. So that's step one, and then, and then we're going to take a staff member, and we're going to go through, starting, what year? And start looking for three pages worth of roads.
You're going to be 1800s.
That's, so that's the first piece.
Isn't this the same thing that we said we weren't gonna go back and, and do?
Yeah, but now he's made a Freedom of Information request, and it changes things. The other piece that you have is, uh, and this is, you know, not, not really a direction we wanna go into, but I'm, I'm not sure what other options you have. Um, I mean, we will take the time to do it if that's the direction, and let's make, you know, I wanna make that clear. I just don't know when and how that's gonna happen.
Hmm.
Um, there is a, a refusal and a denial and an action for protection. So if a body or agency or official having custody or control of any public records refuses permission to inspect or request, the agency needs to notify them within five days. A request for inspection or copying may be denied in whole or in part on the basis that the request is an unduly burdensome or oppressive if the procedure established in this section are followed. Um, it goes on to say that if, if we can prove or we can ask for an action of protection against the Supreme Court if we feel it's an undue burdensome request, which has legal fees written all over it.
Yeah.
Um, the other option, the other option that we talked about is, would it be, um, can we legally say, here's all the town records, you're welcome to come in and look through all of them and find those records, you know, and, and prove one way or the other if, if Mr. Winchell's comments are correct. The problem is, we're back to the mask mandate.
Right.
And we can't let them in.
Yeah. And I'd be leery about letting that much records sitting out for someone to go through.
Somebody would have to sit with it.
Someone to be there with them.
And we don't do that anyways, I mean, even if, and, and I feel bad, I'm always picking on Dennis because he's the closest, but even if Will came up and said he wanted to look at, you know, look for marriages from the 1800, he'd be put in, in our sight with the book. We don't let them, you know what I mean, we don't, we don't do that.
Yeah.
Um.
Do you even think that?
I don't know that I can get it done in 25 hours.
I mean, that's what I'm saying, is he, is that something he can even afford? I mean, I would think.
Oh, yeah, well, not, let's not, I, that's not our place, I don't know.
Well, no, but I'm saying, you have to ask, don't you, before you get started?
Well, no, well, we wouldn't start it, so that's what I'm saying. You can request, based on the amount of work, the statutes are very clear that you can request payment in advance. Anything over $100, so estimate, so, the agency or official having custody, if the estimate of the total cost is greater than $30, the agency or official shall inform the requester before proceeding in writing. If the estimate of the total cost is greater than 100, subsection 10 applies, 10. The agency or official having custody or control, um, may require a requester to pay all or a portion of the estimated cost to complete the request prior to search, retrieval, compiling, conversion, or copying of the public record.
So would you let the person know, um, this is gonna take me over this many hours at least?
I mean, we are starting at 25 hours just for, because there's three pages worth of roads, and I'm not sure where else to start.
Right, I just, I didn't know if that would be the end of it.
I, I don't know, I mean, that's, that's not up to, I mean, we, we could send an email, and if that's, if we wanna do that rather than a newly burdensome, um, or, we can say, you know, the.
And then we'd have to figure out after that how, I mean, how far back.
And then what's gonna happen when we can't find, you know, road, the H Road in any of these records? I mean, we're talking about a massive, massive project to undertake in a small town that, you know.
That's ridiculous, I think, but the problem we have is too, is, okay, even at the 25 hours, uh, he's paying what, $15 an hour?
Correct.
Okay, the people that are doing the work are making more than that, we're losing. No matter which way.
Yeah, we're losing money, but.
Looking at, and at the end of the day, we're gonna come off the same income, uh, same income. And, uh, but, uh, I mean, I, he, he has every right to come up here and, and play private investigator. Uh, I just don't like, I don't see the town of Acton having to, the taxpayers of the town of Acton having to foot the bill for somebody's investigation. And that's what this is. And myself, I'd refuse it, or let, let, let the land use lawyer take care of it, whatever. But I, we don't have enough resources up here to be having you guys play private investigator. Because when's the next one gonna come in, so there's four other ones listed. So, this is an every week event with this guy, and it's getting nowhere. And we've already said that we weren't gonna go down this road, and we all know where this road leads.
Yeah.
Should we have?
I mean, you can claim it's an unduly, you know, we can, we can offer, you know, we can offer that he can come in, that he can send someone in on his behalf, you know what I mean? And, you know, if he's not able, we could send somebody in on his behalf to look at the books, to maybe gather the information. Um, you can claim it's an undue burden something.
There's no way, because the problem is, we all know.
I mean, we've only got.
There's missing stuff, and a lot of stuff got thrown away.
Years ago.
So what happens is, if that stuff got thrown away, anything that we need for that, all that does is come back and just stir the pot some more.
Yeah.
Not saying that that's what happened, but if we can't find a city lawn road, what happens?
Aren't some of these roads renamed? Were they renamed?
That too, you know, Winchell Orchard Road used to be Winchell, uh, well, Orchard.
My staff just has no way of knowing that.
Right.
I mean.
And he probably don't either, so, but, uh.
We're better off putting all these names back on the for town meeting and revoting on them. Be quicker and easier.
No, we're not.
And make it, make it done.
Because the problem is, is your, your voting roads that were already taken care of, they get voted out, and we're in the same po, same problem, because we, they will get.
Yeah.
Because it depends, if, if we went through the roads that we were actually taking care of, that'd be a story.
Mm-hmm.
We don't know what happened, what, what happened back in 2010, okay, that'd be another story.
Let's not, yeah, let's not go back in history.
But all we're doing is entertain, we're, we're fueling the fire here. And, and at the end of the day, we know the.
I just worry about rights and stuff.
I mean, we are answering as many of these as we can, I mean, we've got a clear, you know what I mean, we've got, um.
He just found a different way of asking the question.
Yep.
That's all he did.
I mean, the, the last one was the last one we just talked about, I can't even remember.
We feel that, you know, we, it is undue.
I mean, I don't, I don't even know where to start, I mean, you know, and that's, and some of these things just can't be delegated. And I just don't know, you know what I mean, how.
Do you wanna talk to the attorney?
I don't, I don't want these guys being responsible for this. This might be over their pay grade, because I mean, not, not, unfortunately, but it may be. I mean, this is something you have to go back years and years.
Right.
Yeah, a hundred years.
And, you know, honestly, this is something that has to be taken care of by someone who deals in land use.
Mm-hmm.
Lawyer.
And that's gonna cost us some real money.
Oh, yeah, we were gonna say, we can't, we can't have the attorney through that.
No.
Um, I mean, you know, and, and I, I feel like, I mean, a court may side with the town because we are making every attempt to fill as many as, as these as we can. I mean, the one that we just did, we're filling it by answering that we're gonna do it by phone, you know? The video walkway that the individual wanted, you know, we didn't, DVD, he couldn't read, so today, we're sending him a flash drive. I mean, so it's not like we're turning them all over, it's undue burden, burden.
First time we've ever done it, I know.
This is the first time we've ever done it since I've been in this position, I mean, I just, you know, so I, I mean, offer him.
I would offer him to come in.
Offer him to come in.
Search he wants, he denies that, we try, then we, we go to the other thing.
Yeah.
That's what I would do.
I'll go with that.
Yep.
Ben? Yeah.
Yeah.
Alrighty. D, Budget Workshop Timeline?
So, um, a couple of months ago, when we put together the budget time, on the budget workshop, we were unsure if we were gonna do the time, the workshop in person or via Zoom. Um, I think that it's safe that we do it in, in person. If it's okay with you guys, we'll certainly set up the tables and keep everybody six feet apart. I think it's easier that way.[1646.21] I think it's easier that way. It's scheduled for next Saturday, the sixth, um, unless you wanna do it via Zoom, it's.
So, I mean, we have, what, us three, you, Michelle?
And the Warren Finance.
Which is seven members?
Yeah.
And then we have, what, fire?
There won't be seven.
Well, it's, there'll be.
So, five, probably, yeah, we, I mean, we've.
Yeah, there's seven in the audience right now, they're way far apart, and then you're gonna have a department head, so.
And if you did have the tables set up.
But you still have to have it open to the public, too.
Yeah, it would be open to the public, yeah. I mean, it's up to you, it's, it's.
I think we could do it, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, in front of you is a schedule, we've kinda gone off of last year's where we tried to do the transportation first 'cause he's got it, he's running it.
Yeah.
Um, cable, fire and rescue, uh, the roads, and, um, rec, conservation forestry, which, I mean, some of these that are flatlined are the same, we won't, we may not ask them to come in, um.
Right.
So, general government, um, and.
Would we not ask them to come in?
Well, I mean, I'm gonna, I'm gonna reach out to Steve Bogdan, Conservation Forestry. Um, they didn't even ask for any money this year. The, um, the cemetery, I believe, flatlined, I mean, we'll, you know, I don't think they've had a meeting, but let me reach out to some chairs, um, unless the Warren Finance has, you know, questions, we can always follow some of, follow some of them up, but, um, rec has preferred to do all theirs via Zoom, and their budget is down, um, I mean, it, it, looking at the budget, I mean, you know, that, they're definitely gonna wanna talk to the transportation, um, fire and rescue, depending on what you move forward, the roads are gonna be a conversation, and then we've got some things in general government, but we'll invite them all, but I don't want anybody to feel uncomfortable.
Yeah, I guess the big thing is to just, you know, show the finance committee that they agree.
Yeah. I'll call the chair tomorrow, and we'll chat about it and have him reach out to his committee. So, we'll plan on in person unless we get a overflux of, of response from the Warren Finance.
Yeah, and it's our own internal meeting anyway, so if we end up having too many people, we'll put it off.
And we'll keep the department heads, you know, out.
Yeah.
One at a time, so.
Yeah, bring them in.
Yeah.
All right, E, Poll Permit?
Uh, so this just came in about, uh, ten minutes before the meeting, it's a poll permit for, uh, it says, application for a poll permit or underground location, this is Acton Ridge Road, Little Round Pond Road.
Where?
That's what it says.
Little?
Poll one thirty-seven, Road, Acton Ridge Road. That's you, right?
Yeah, what's the other one?
It says Acton Ridge Road slash C N P slash Little Round Pond Road. Wanna look at it? Maybe they're changing. Maybe they're changing it on, maybe they're changing the poll a little bit each time. It says.
It says Acton Ridge.
And then it says.
Little Pond Road.
I'll make this up. Anyways, they wanna replace the poll, oh, there you go, here's a map.
There we go, you got a map?
Sure, I wanna follow that. Know what that is?
Looks like Little Pond. Burbank, where's Burbank?
Oh, Burbank is out on the ridge.
Oh, Burbank, I don't know.
Did it used to be called Little Pond Round Road or whatever?
No, Burbank's awesome, so.